Reconvene this meeting, there we are, alright. The lights just came on. Reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board, thanks for being here tonight, again. And without further ado, I would ask that I get a motion to certify closed session.
Mr. Chair, oh, you can, you can. Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you Ms. Cook, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Ms. Young, and Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And if I can have Ms. Sam Lordes and her field hockey team join us at the front podium, and they're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if everybody would stand, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you ladies. Don't get too comfortable, we'll have you back up in a second. Alright, Ms. Aller, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
We got you, you're good, alright. We're all here, thank you. And item 3.03, approval of our agenda, I think we have a request to amend our agenda, Ms. Cook?
Yes sir, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add item 9.0, a discussion of staff retention, and then have every item after that increased by one number, that's my motion, sir.
So the motion is to add 9.01, shift every other item after that down, and 9.01 would be a discussion of staff retention.
Yes sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Ms. Hummel, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say that the reason I'm asking for this item to be added to today's agenda is in response to some of the information that we learned at Friday's joint meeting, I just wonder if it warrants discussion and consideration from the board, and, and learning a little bit more from Dr. Heron and her team.
Thank you Ms. Cook, any, any others? And this will be simply a discussion, a little bit of, I think, fact-finding from the division, but also some questions, and just a little bit of query, time for query. No actions will be taken tonight, based on this discussion. If there's nothing else, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. Alright, let's move on to announcements and superintendents' reports, Dr. Heron.
Thank you Mr. Chair. Throughout March, we are celebrating Disability Awareness Month in our schools and across the division to showcase what any of us can achieve despite personal challenges. This evening, I would like to shine a light on a recent accomplishment of our special education team. Communication is a key part of life, and yet being able to speak verbally can be taken for granted. Those with limited expressive language may exhibit difficulty effectively communicating with those around them. This year, inside every elementary school and on every elementary school playground in our division, almost fifty alternative communication boards have been installed. The communication boards display universally accepted images to help students with limited verbal expression communicate with teachers, educators, and friends, all while feeling included and understood. The communication boards have been designed to include images relevant to their installation site to make communication possible in different locations throughout the day, from hallways and cafeterias to playgrounds and gymnasiums. The intent is to build students' confidence, independence, and relationships. In support of Disability Awareness Month, schools have been provided lessons that introduce ways for staff and student to interact with the communication boards, and training will continue throughout the year. What is it like to work in WJCC schools, and why do our veteran employees choose to stay with us? According to Mr. Butler, head custodian at Stonehouse, "The most rewarding thing about working at WJCC schools is helping my team solve problems and find creative solutions." We have a strong and positive culture at WJCC schools as evidenced in this and other quotes from teachers and staff, already part of the WJC schools' family. Please visit wjccschools.org/careers to apply and join us for the 22-23 school year. Thank you Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you Dr. Heron, are there any board members that would like to offer a report? Ms. Ortigo.
Yeah, I serve on the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to make it known that this, this committee is launching a new initiative, a pilot initiative called Career Connections, which is basically hosting a series of mock interviews at all three high schools. This is gonna take place between April 19th and April 22nd, and the division is looking for community members, business leaders, people throughout the community to help conduct these interviews. So, and it's, it's an ambitious pilot launch, they, they are looking for quite a number of people from the community, and I think it's a really exciting opportunity to just have people from, from all over our Williamsburg Village, if you will, get involved and, and help prepare our high school students for the next step. So I just wanted to make that known, and if, I guess the easiest way, if, if you could find me, if you're interested in participating, you can email me and I'll pass it on to the appropriate division staff member.
Thank you Ms. Ortigo. No others? Ms. Dr. Beers.
Mr. Chair, we are pleased to recognize student athletes.
Dr. Beers?
Sorry.
Give me, give me one second.
I'm sorry.
If you, if there are no other reports, give us a second to get down there. Alright, okay, we're good? Okay, let's move on to staff and student recognitions.
Mr. Chair, we are pleased to recognize student athletes who have also excelled academically. Tonight, we are honored to recognize Lafayette's girls, field hockey players, who were named to the National Field Hockey Coaches Association Academic Squad. Would the following students please join us up front? Madison Adcock. Sienna. Sydney King. The National Academic Squad recognizes esteemed junior and senior field hockey players who earned a minimum cumulative unweighted grade point average of 3.5 through the first quarter of the 2021-22 school year. These four members of the squad were recognized for this distinction. Thank you. Now, we'd like them to stay, also stay up here, we'd also like to ask Kendall Bach, Clara Burchess, Billyian Cook, and Emma Moyer to join us up front. These student athletes were recognized as scholars of distinction for achieving a minimum cumulative unweighted GPA of 3.9 through the first quarter of the 2021-22 school year. Congratulations, we are so proud of each of these outstanding young ladies for their accomplishment. I just might add, these are truly academic student athletes.
Thank you. Thank you Dr. Beers. And congratulations to everyone, and thank you to our wonderful principal and coaches as well, great work. Let's move on to item 6.01, public comment, Dr. Beers?
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have already submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It's the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration during these presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making references to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated, and each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks you that you respect this time limitation, and please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you Mr. Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you Dr. Beers, our first speaker.
And our very first speaker is Robin Pavloski.
Good evening to all of you who are on the school board, my name is Robin Pavloski. I recently went to the curriculum review night held at James Blair. The three individuals who facilitated the night were very respectful and helpful. In the future, we as a community would like to have more than one week to review curriculum. Since the curriculum was reviewed for a much longer period through the schools, it is only right that parents and citizens have at least the same amount of time. It is important for parents and citizens in general to know what is being taught to the children in our community, they are our future leaders. I think that the few books I was able to review shared a particular point of view which doesn't help students think critically. Students need to make decisions for themselves and not be led into an answer. For instance, in one book, I reviewed the title of one section was "A Nation Divided." While there were some facts, the authors chose to purposely point out division instead of trying to encourage them to research answers from the different viewpoints in order to help students think for themselves and come to their own conclusions. I also questioned some of the so-called facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you Ms. Pavloski.
And our second speaker is Brenda Abbott.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Abbott, I'd also like to talk about the book fair, and I'd like to say that my comments have nothing to do with the stuff that was present, they were fabulous. The book adoption fair was appreciated, but limited time access and response methods were problematic. Eurosciences and Biology texts included activities to enhance understanding of the scientific process and data collection, that was fabulous. However, limited to zero factors were offered for the top- However, limited to zero factors were offered for the topics of energy and echo tours, and yet negative judgment of America was inferred or stated for these topics. All three government textbooks offered only one view of current events. I'm not opposed to the fact that this view is published in the books. I am opposed to the fact that no alternative views were published in the books. The development of critical thinking requires the evaluation of multiple factors and views. When only one is offered, that is not education. That is indoctrination. We are a deeply divided nation. Pushing one narrative through education will only deepen this divide and has politicized our public school systems. Those so passionate about diversity seem unable to champion diversity of thought. Alienating half of the country is unacceptable and un-American. All student and teacher curriculum and resources should be made readily transparent for the public to explore, and unless and until this can be addressed, it may be time to fund students instead of systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
And our next speaker is John Gulick. Gulick? I believe that's right.
My name is John Gulick. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a teacher and a parent here in WJCC County Schools, and I want to take a minute to talk to you about teacher compensation in this year's school board budget. Over the past few months, I've watched the school board work towards developing the priorities for this budget. I've watched representatives from the Human Resources Department present information that outlined the fact that WJCC schools is near the bottom of workers' compensation amongst other divisions in Hampton Roads. As of today, teachers in Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Newport News, Hampton, Suffolk, Portsmouth, and York County, at my level of compensation, I am the lowest out of all the school districts. I think unfortunately you've missed the mark on this year's budget in Hampton Roads. As other schools, districts are in the process of proposing their budgets and identifying their goals, many are increasing teacher compensation to the point where unfortunately I feel that we educators will begin here in WJCC where we ended last year, at the bottom. A teacher my level could leave this division and teach at an elementary school, a middle school, or a high school, all with a Williamsburg address, and expect a 14% increase in salary of where I am today. Obviously, as a professional, I have the ability to go where I'm compensated and where I feel valued. However, my students and my own children don't have that luxury, and I'm worried about if we're consistently at the bottom, what type of talent will be attracted into our classrooms next year and the years to come.
Thank you, Mr. Gulick.
Thank you.
Mr. Gulick, I'm sorry. Mr. Gulick, did you have more?
No.
Did you leave with the clerk? Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Husang.
Tonight, I want to talk and ask the school board, go into emergency session or executive session, whatever you call it, and vote to immediately remove the superintendent from her position. She has come in here and repeatedly stated to you and to the parents that critical race theory, social-emotional learning, or whatever the new term of the day is, is not being taught in our schools. Yet, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, which represents every Virginia superintendent according to the recent letter, is pushing to repeal Governor Youngkin's Executive Order Number One, which bans critical race theory in schools. Yes, they want to keep critical race theory in Virginia schools, though we've been told repeatedly that it isn't being taught. But she has not been honest with you or the parents of this district. This organization is also asking to have the governor's tip line terminated. This is where an individual can call and report a teacher for teaching or using critical race theory in their classrooms. If it's not being taught, then why are the superintendents trying to get rid of this tip line? The fact is, it is being taught. This tip line is being used, and teachers and superintendents are afraid that they will soon be exposed to what they have been teaching our students, contrary to what has been stated in the public, what has been stated to you. The superintendent has repeatedly misrepresented these issues to you and to us parents, and she doesn't deserve to hold her position one day longer.
Thank you, Ms. Husang.
Thank you.
I do want to remind our speakers that individuals should not be mentioned in public comment, individuals meaning personnel. Who's our next speaker?
Next speaker is Emery Smith.
I'd also like to thank the entire team that hosted and coordinated the textbook review last Thursday. The staff was prepared, they were courteous, and they were very receptive to the feedback. I asked a lot of questions, and the staff member that was with me, and I forgive me, I did not, I don't, I didn't want to get her name wrong, so she sat down with me, she explained her responses, she was very pleasant. There was material that I did find that needed further analysis by the division as to the level of appropriateness, and I do appreciate the opportunity to provide the input. On a different note, as a parent and Virginia voter, I supported the, I support the work of our current Virginia Superintendent Balo and Secretary Gudera, and I support what they've done thus far. That same memo that was referenced on the prior speaker from VAS, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, it was issued on March 10th authored by Director Howard Kaiser. The memo appears to take issue with Barlow and Gudera's work. So we'd all like to know where our superintendent stands on it as one of the 133 division superintendents that it purported to represent. Perhaps this could be either addressed at this meeting, or I think you have my email, so I'm open to an email response. And then I'd just like to add a note, there's still signs on the doors outside of this building to wear masks and stay six feet apart, and I'd like to know when those will be removed from the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Next speaker is Susan Finley.
Hello. Hello. My name is Susan Finley, and I'm speaking to you all this evening as a concerned parent of an 11th grade student at War Hill High School. I am respectfully asking that our capable school board and talented leadership team investigate the current school climate at War Hill and develop an appropriate action plan for change. As a parent, it's been heartbreaking to hear stories from my daughter and see the pictures and video of recent violence there. Heartbreaking to learn that the school has the nickname "The War Zone." Heartbreaking to hear that the frequency of violence is nine fights in two school days. Heartbreaking to learn that the school resource officer had to be taken away by ambulance for injuries. Heartbreaking to hear good friends say, "Is it safe to send my kids to school?" Or, "I'm just going to put mine in a private school." Or, "The violence doesn't affect my student because they're not a part of those groups." I've watched many of these students grow up since their kindergarten days at Norwich Elementary. Inaction is not acceptable. Our entire community deserves better. The amazing faculty and staff at War Hill deserve better. Our students and families deserve better. We can no longer ignore the warning signs. War Hill has reached a crisis level, and the time for change is now. Together, we must stand up for what we know is needed. I implore you to please act swiftly and improve the climate at War Hill. Your community is counting on you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Our next speaker is Karen Burgsagel. I wasn't quite sure where the stress was on that.
I usually say Burgsagel, but in the old country, it was much more complicated. Hello. Thank you all for being here again, doing such a wonderful job. I'd like to thank you for employing a superintendent who is allied with her fellow superintendents in wanting an end to a tip line and the supposed teaching of divisive comments. But that's not what I came here to say. What I came here to say is that I was looking at the learning losses in the SOHs. And there, while all students have had problems and there's learning loss, it's unquestionable that minority students, including those who are black, those who speak a second language, those who are disabled, those who are homeless, those who have socioeconomic challenges, are failing much faster. I don't have the answers, of course, but something needs to happen. This worries me more than anything. One thing I think would make a difference is having more minority teachers in the classroom. I know that that is something that Williamsburg James City County Schools are committed to, but whatever y'all are doing doesn't seem to be working. I'll follow up with an email.
And our next speaker is Ellen Parram.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman Dowell, esteemed members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Ellen Parram, President of the Williamsburg James City Education Association. On behalf of the WJCA, we acknowledge the importance of the 7% increase in staff salary for eligible employees, as many factors, as I mentioned before, will impact staff income in upcoming year due to inflation rates, the increase in gas prices, as many of us drive 30 to 40 minutes to work every day, and the competitive salary rates of neighboring divisions. However, today, I ask that you look up some of the data that I provided to you tonight on salary comparisons from our closest divisions in WJCC. Salary will always be a continuous topic each year, so I hope that this data will be useful today and the future, so that one day, WJCC can be considered the number-one competitive division in teacher salary, along with its competitive high marks in academic excellence, while fulfilling the promise of a high-quality public education that our students and children in this community rightfully deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parram.
And our next speaker is Diane Dofflermeyer.
Hello. My name is Diane Dofflermeyer. My three children graduated from James City County Schools, and I now have three grandchildren in Williamsburg James City County Schools. And my husband taught in the, he's now retired, but taught in the district for about 20 years or so. A few things, I do want to support the raises for the teachers. I think that's essential to attracting quality teachers. And you look at what inflation is right now, I mean, that's going to hit the teachers really, really hard. The other thing I want to say that I think is almost as important and has been touched on by another speaker is discipline. And I think that it's, discipline is a huge, huge problem in our schools, and that's one reason why you can't keep quality teachers, because they don't feel like they're being backed up by administrators. My husband told me numerous stories, teachers would come to him, he was, for whatever reason, he was, I guess, the one that they trusted to come to, but he, over the years, heard numerous stories of teachers that felt totally disrespected by administrators in schools after students did things, and there were just no repercussions. One of the things in my husband's many years of teaching is he taught at Virginia Randolph High School in Henrico County, which is the alternative school for Henrico County, and they had their students, and Williamsburg may do it totally different, but he used to say, I'm sorry, I guess I'll have to write something down, but...
We'll look forward to your email. Thank you, Ms. Dofflermeyer.
All right. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Brenda, I'm sorry, is, oops, I got these mixed up. Oh, I think that was our, sorry, that was our last speaker.
All right. We'll move on to item 7.7, 7.01 Consent Agenda. Give me a moment while I read through these items on our consent agenda. We have Approval of Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll for February 2022, Approval of Minutes from February 15th, 2022 Meeting, Approval of Minutes from March 1st, 2022, Approval of Minutes from March 11th, Approval of Resolution R922, Month of the Military Child, Approval of Resolution R1022, School Library Month, Approval of Resolution R1122, Public School Volunteer Week, Approval of Resolution R1222, the SBA 2022 Business Honor Roll, Approval of, excuse me, Revisions to Policy BD, School Board Meetings, Approval of Revisions to Policy BDDC, Agenda Preparation, Dissemination and Format, and Agenda Item 7.11, Approval of Revisions to Policy IICA, Field Trips and Excursions. Can I have a motion to approve those items?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortigo. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Ms. Holler?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item 8.01, Approval of Personnel Actions, may have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Holler?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. 8.02, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget. I think I want to kick it over to Dr. Heron first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewing has a small amount of updated information for us tonight before you vote on a final approval of the budget for fiscal year '23. Ms. Ewing, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. Even though the state's budget isn't finalized yet, we wanted to share with you this evening information related to the state budget and what impact the House and Senate versions would have on our revenue for next year. On this slide, you will see our current proposed fiscal year '23 state revenue based on the governor's budget and a comparison to the House version of the state budget. Under the House version, we would receive approximately $320,000 less in state funding. Some of the differences as compared to the governor's budget include the following. The House provides an additional reduction to the sales tax for groceries and personal hygiene products. The reductions in state sales tax distributions are offset by a corresponding increase to this sales tax hold harmless payments for school divisions. The House proposes to reduce the compensation supplement to 4%, but also proposes a 1% one-time bonus payment. School divisions must certify to the Virginia Department of Education that sufficient funds have been budgeted for an equivalent bonus or compensation supplement to receive state funding. The House budget proposes to maintain state funding for the English as a Second Language program at 20 positions per 1,000 students, proposes to increase the per pupil amount for the Infrastructure and Operations Per Pupil Fund, and it proposes to remove state funding for the expansion of the Early Reading Initiative to K through 5 and to decrease additional funding for at-risk add-on. Based on current information, this would be the worst-case scenario for our state revenue for next year. On the next slide, you will see our current proposed fiscal year '23 state revenue based on the governor's budget again, and a comparison to the Senate version of the state budget. Under the Senate version, we will receive $960,000 more in state funding. Some of the differences as compared to the governor's budget include the following. It provides state funding for reading specialists within basic aid. The funding, funded staffing standard in the proposal is one reading specialist per 550 students in grades K through 3. The Senate budget also provides additional state support for funded SOQ support positions within basic aid currently subject to the support position funding ratio cap. In fiscal year '23, this proposal provides 20 support positions per 1,000 students in base ADM, and in fiscal year '24, it increases to 21 support positions. Like the House version, it proposes to remove state funding for the expansion of the Early Reading Initiative to K through 5. So based on the current information, this would be the best-case scenario. The Senate budget also provides additional state support for funded SOQ support positions within basic aid currently subject to the support position funding ratio cap. In fiscal year 23, this proposal provides 20 support positions per 1,000 students in base ADM, and in fiscal year 24, it increases to 21 support positions. Like the House version, it proposes to remove state funding for the expansion of the Early Reading Initiative to K through 5. So based on the current information, this would be the best-case scenario. The proposed budget includes a funding request to the localities of approximately 1.6 million. The contract for the joint operation of the school division defines how the funding will be shared each year and is based on the previous year's September 30 enrollment, then averaging the percentages for the two preceding fiscal years. The contract is reviewed every five years, with the last revision being completed in April 2017. And because this process is not yet complete to know how the percentages will be calculated for fiscal year 23, the information reflected in the budget proposal is based on the current fiscal year 22 funding splits of 90.33% for James City County and 9.67% for the city of Williamsburg. This means that the change from year to year is the same for each locality at 1.7%. Once the information is finalized for the current year, it is possible that the percentage change for each locality would be different, even though the overall local revenue increase would still be 1.7%. Here I have an example for you. So this shows that if the split were to end up being 90.2% for James City County and 9.8% for the city of Williamsburg, it would mean an overall increase of 1.6% for James City County and a 3.1% increase for the city of Williamsburg when you compare it to our fiscal year 22 budget. In closing, again, the state budget is not yet finalized, but we must provide to our funding partners a budget request by April 1. Any adjustments that would be necessary once the state budget is finalized would then be incorporated once we know our local funding. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Questions from the board? From Ms. Ewing while she's here?
Can we do our disclosure?
Oh, please, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, Mr. Chair, as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 23 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year 23 school budget because my husband is an employee of the Williamsburg James City County Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of the vote and vote on a budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you both. I'll figure that out eventually and help you out with that.
Yeah, we'll struggle on this year.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Ewing or Dr. Heron? Yeah, Ms. Cook.
Thank you. Yeah, I have some questions and some comments. Mr. Chair, thank you. Dr. Heron, could you talk to us a little bit about, you know, we have a 7% raise proposed in this budget? What, can you tell us what's going on in terms of percentage salary increase in neighboring divisions? Is that inform, I know it's very dynamic right now, but what are you hearing out there?
It is very dynamic. I've been trying to track. A lot of divisions are offering a 5% raise. Chesapeake just announced a 10% raise for teachers today. I think Norfolk is about 6.5%, I believe. So everyone is in a different place depending on where they are, and a lot of budgets have not been finally approved or presented yet. So it really is a movable thing right now. And even though many had started on 5%, it looks like some are beginning to shift pretty dramatically.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. I support the elements that you've outlined in your request and plan to vote for it today. I do think that this board needs to, well, let me just say that I support sort of worst-case scenario and asking the local governments to make up the difference if the prevailing budget at the end of the day is the one that aligns more with the House version, which would mean an increase here at local level. I just want to talk a little bit about that. You know, I'm going to, Mr. Kelly used to say every time we talked about the operating budget that the problem isn't here locally, it's in Richmond. I just want to speak to that just comparatively for just a second. I think we should give a significantly higher raise to our teachers, but I think we also need to recognize that in our community, because of the way the state funding works, Williamsburg and James City County are asked to contribute significantly more than their neighbors. So if we take York County, for instance, you know, we're asking James City County to pay north of $87 million when York County is having to pay closer to $57 million. So you're talking about, you know, tens of millions of dollars difference. York County gets $21 million in federal dollars. We get, what, less than $2 million? Is that right?
In the operating budget, it's less than $100,000.
Less than $100,000, sorry, yes. So, so, so we have a comparable-sized division next door to us with a significantly different student population, but their local governments are having to come up with, you know, $20 million less than James City County's having to. And that puts real strain, and if you look at tax rates, they're reflective of that. And so locally, I think our government, our local governments are doing an incredible job of making up the difference, but we have real fiscal constraints in a tourism economy and a service economy and a retirement economy. And so I would, I would love to see revenue increase, and I would love to see us be able to pay our teachers more, but I just think we have to be aware that James City County and Williamsburg are being asked to pay millions of dollars more than their neighbors, and that has a, that has an impact on the ground for our school division, and I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you. So I will support the budget today, Mr. Chair.
You mentioned, if I can come back to you, if that's okay for clarification, you mentioned supporting the budget today. You also mentioned, did you mention the 321,000?
Yeah, I think we should ask.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Any other comments or questions? You look antsy, Ms. Young.
Well, I, I, I mean, one of the things, having been a teacher as, as my colleague has, you know, teachers are always at the lowest level. I mean, they're graduating from, other than social workers, when they're graduating from college, and it's a constant uphill climb from there. And the increase, some years in our division, we haven't been able to give much. In fact, I think there was one year we didn't, we didn't give any. So I would, I would love to see more. My concern is, in relation to what Ms. Cook said, is we are, the community is already paying a lot. And I did understand from our representative from the Education Association, gas prices are going up. I saw in Richmond, $5. One place I saw $8 for diesel, which I hope that was a big mistake. But the, the gas prices are affecting everyone and not just our teachers, which is unfortunate. So I think, I think that our division is, has presented a budget that best represents what this, this community is able to do at this point. I would, I would love to give a much larger raise because I certainly know our teachers deserve it. But I'd like to just keep in mind what Ms. Cook said and, and just remember that our local governing, governing bodies are, are asking the citizens of this area to make of that difference, and it's a lot. I mean, $20 million is nothing to sneeze at. But anyway, I do support the superintendent's budget, and I will be voting yes tonight.
No, no, okay. My mind goes back to, as I, as I look at the potential worst-case scenario, 321,235 dollars, that yes, who's going to make that up? We're not a taxing, we don't have taxing authority. We'd be looking at our funding partners at the city and county to make up the difference. My mind goes back to our last meeting and our work session, which preceded the joint meeting that we had, when was that?
It's Friday.
Friday? The days run together. And in that meeting, we discussed a few new options, which was a 10% or an 8% or holding firm at 7. And Ms. Cook, I believe, brought us to a realization that, you know, we might be asking our funding partners for a little bit more just to get us to that 7. I think it's still a reality that 1% equals essentially $1 million, right? And so there was a point in time where we were looking at potentially 4% from either Senate or House, probably House, I think, with a potential for a bonus, but nobody can guarantee a bonus. And so how do we make up that extra percentage? If it ended up being 4%, it would be an additional $1 million versus what we're looking at, 321,235 dollars at a worst-case scenario. I'm grateful that it's not worse than that, and I'm grateful for funding partners that understood that this could be a likely scenario, what we're discussing here, as we discussed it in our joint meeting Friday. As I looked around that room, I saw a lot of support to provide teachers with the amount of financial wherewithal that we could, and that they understood at that time that things just weren't certain in Richmond and that we might be coming back and asking for more. So I am prepared to ask for an amendment to our superintendent's proposed budget, and I think that amendment should be in the amount of 321,235 dollars unless somebody else sees differently.
Mr. Chair, so there's not a motion on the table yet, but aren't we asking, isn't the motion to ask for a total amount? And then embedded in that would be a change in the request? So we're not increasing the total amount? We're just going to be asking the school, the localities to backfill? So doesn't the motion remain the same?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
We should, it's, we're presenting our budget of need, assuming that our funding, you know, we're going to get a certain amount, and if that certain amount, it looks like it's going to be even for best or worst-case scenario, less than we thought, we're still presenting a budget of need.
Right.
So we, it'll be up to the funding partners.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Chair, in your transmittal letter, I think you can clarify.
The number hasn't changed, is what you're saying?
Our number hasn't changed.
Bottom line.
Our, our number hasn't changed. So we're, we're approving a request of an operating budget of 183-plus million. And so as you, I think, transmit that request to the local governments, I think you could say that, that what you see is a 1.7 increase on paper, but in the event that the General Assembly predictions don't hold, we're asking you to make up the difference. So that, that's, that would, I think, take place in the transmittal letter.
I understand.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Is that?
Not exactly what we had discussed, but.
I guess we talked briefly, you know, as Ms. Cook mentioned tonight about the potential shortfall, is it better to ask for it as part of the new total? Or do you want to keep it the same and do as just discussed? It's really up to the board? Because if it was worst-case scenario, we would be going back and asking for more, which we don't have the privilege of doing.
So you're asking to increase the number to 183, 840? No, 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 no?
No, you're, our total expenditure budget, budget isn't going to change, it's just the makeup of the revenue might change.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, because I'm looking at the recommended action here in board docs, and so I don't think that changes.
I'm with you. No, I'm with you.
I don't think we've done that in the past either, have we?
No.
No.
That's fine. Whatever, whatever works.
Let's, let's move forward with approving the superintendent's proposed budget. I'm with you. Yeah, I understand. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Ms. Haller? Well, can we have a motion first? Excuse me. Can we have a motion first?
That we approve the superintendent's budget as presented?
Second.
Can you add a dollar figure, please?
Yes, Ms. Hummel, you get to read that number.
Then I have to go back to board docs. Would you like me to get it off? Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 operating budget in the amount of 183,522 dollars.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ortego, and thank you, Ms. Hunley. Without any further discussion, Ms. Haller?
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, there we go. Aye, thank you. All right, let's move on to item 8.03, A Request for Permanent Easement at Warhol High School.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve your request for a permanent easement at Warhol High School for 615 Opportunity Way, Williamsburg, Virginia, 23188, in the recognition of foregoing and in consideration of the sum of $10 and other good and valuable consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, and thank you, Ms. Hunley, for the second.
Second.
Ms. Hunley's got it? You can get the next one, Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Dr. Heron?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Snipes would just make a quick overview comment tonight, where there were a lot of questions from the board at the last meeting, and we provided responses to those, but Mr. Snipes is going to just do a quick summary for the benefit of the public before you, you vote this evening. Mr. Snipes?
Thank you. Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Heron. During the process of seeking the necessary approvals for getting permitting finalized for the Warhol Auxiliary Gym Project, the school division was notified that state law and subsequent county code to support the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance required, necessitated an easement for the original permitting of the Warhol High School in 2005, 2006. At the present time, there is no record of the request for the easement from James City County, and there's no record of response from WJCC schools at, from 2005, 2006. However, we do have Michael Wilson, who is the Resource Protection Section Chief from Stormwater and Resource Protection here tonight, to answer any additional questions you may have.
Are there additional questions based on that new information, Ms. Young?
Well, Mr. Snipes, and, and thank you, sir, for being here, but there was a question about the area that was on the inner side of the, the easement that was being asked for, on the part that is behind, I think it was close to the tennis courts, there's that area. I mean, is, and is that, I think our question was, is that necessary to give that up? And, okay.
It is required in the natural open space for, that was original with the, with Warhol High School, and Mr. Wilson can explain why.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mike Wilson, Section Chief, Resource Protection, James City County, Stormwater Division. If I may paraphrase your question, ma'am, you, you were asking about the three plus or minus acres over by the tennis courts.
Right.
That was, is part of the overall easement of, I believe it was nine plus or minus acres required to meet stormwater compliance for the site. That area is required in order to meet the stormwater compliance for the project as originally designed back in 2005 and 2006. If we were not to get that part of the easement, additional work would be required prior to the Auxiliary Gym Site Plan Approval to make up for the additional stormwater requirements. And that would cause, in my opinion, that would cause a time delay for that project.
I guess my question is, what kind of changes would need to be done for the, to the work?
We would, there would need to be additional stormwater management facilities designed and built for the additional auxiliary gym.
I don't mean to sound obtuse, but when we, when you refer to facilities, what?
A wet pond or, or such as exist out there on the far side of the tennis courts, there'd be, have to be an additional facility of some sort, whether it's a wet pond or, or what we call a dry pond, infiltration basin, some, something to treat the additional stormwater appropriately. And that was all in the original design, that was handled under the original design part of the wet pond and then partly with the easement. So by not granting So by not granting the entire easement, the project, the original project falls short, and we could not approve the auxiliary gym at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, I guess, I, I guess the question I have is, if we didn't, if we didn't add the auxiliary gym, we're still, the Warhol is still at fault. Is that not true? I mean, we did not satisfy.
That is correct.
And, and I'm, I'm having, puzzles me that, that's the county's responsibility is to notify School Division that these things need to be done, and, and it sounds like it wasn't, wasn't done?
I can't speak to what was or was not done in two thousand five. All I can do is, is go back when the auxiliary gym came up for design approval, we looked into.
And then it was discovered.
And it was discovered at that point in time, sir.
Okay.
So with that, are we ready to move forward so that the
Yeah.
project can continue? All right, thank you for being here, sir, Mr. Wilson.
You're welcome, it's always a pleasure.
Thanks, sir. There are no other questions or comments? We have a motion. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Dr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. Item eight-point-zero-four, approval of revisions to the School Board's standard operating procedures.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the revisions to the School Board meeting dates for 2022.
Eight, eight oh four.
Am, am I in the wrong place? Sorry.
Eight oh four.
SOP.
Eight oh four.
Eight oh four. Okay. I move that we approve the revisions to the School Board's standard operating procedures.
All right. Is there a second?
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any comments? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. And Ms. Hummel, would you like to do the next one?
Sure, I move that we approve the revisions to the School Board meeting dates for 2022.
All right, is there a second for dates?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any concern about the dates? Yes, Dr. Beers?
The only question I had, it, it was, I noticed that July and August, we have, we identified two meeting dates, do we always meet twice in July and twice in August in the past?
There's only one July date.
But maybe that, those are just placeholders, and if we need to meet, we can?
There's only one July date.
There was, which column am I looking at then?
Yeah, July twelfth is what I have. Oh, July seventh, wait a minute, published agenda is, that's talking about the publication of the agenda, but, yeah, but July twelfth is the only meeting date. Am I correct?
Yeah, one meeting date in July twelfth, and two in August, second of the sixteenth.
Right.
Okay, I, I stand corrected, I was looking at another one.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, wait.
Maybe he's looking at the other column.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was looking at another.
Challenges? Okay.
Challenges.
Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. And we are on to our added agenda item, which was teacher retention conversation. Dr. Herron, if you wouldn't mind?
Basically, the, the board asked to add this to the agenda tonight to, to talk about, you know, concerns with teacher retention. I presented some information to the board from our annual intent survey, and, and we do have potentially three hundred teachers, some, many of whom don't intend to return next year, or are uncertain at this moment in time, and that led to the board wanting to discuss potentially teacher retention and other ways we may be able to do that.
Ms. Cook?
Mr. Chair, if I may, so I guess, I, I, I was interested in discussing this tonight, and we're talking about teacher retention, but I think it was staff retention is the, is, I think, what we added to the agenda, but, but I think that's up for discussion, but I, I just wanted to bring that up. But I heard two, two pieces of information at Friday's joint meeting that I think are related. The first is that the intent to return information is not coming in as it has historically, which is of concern, and also because we have unfilled positions in our current budget, we may have some ability us to, well, I think what Dr. Herron reported at Friday was that, and please don't, I hope I'm not putting words in your mouth or misquoting you, Dr. Herron, so please jump in if I am, that we are looking at potentially having a, a higher-than-normal end-of-year balance as a result of teacher or staff positions not being filled. So I look at that, and I, and I'm thinking it is far more strategic and ultimately less expensive and better for children and better for the division to retain current quality staff than it is to lose them and try to re-recruit. We have historically started each school year fully staffed or, or nearly fully staffed, which is something that most school divisions recently cannot claim, and I don't want to slip from that. And so I am wondering if we can ask staff to provide information to us about our current financial position, whether there's an opportunity to provide perhaps a signing bonus to teachers or to staff at large at this time to, to incent, because we know there are signing bonuses out there, we know that they are taking teachers away from us, we have typically been the ones stealing teachers, now they are being stolen from us, and I am curious if we have the ability to look at our budget and respond in a way that keeps teachers. I, I recognize that inflation is out there, that gas prices are up, and so our budget may not be able to accommodate that, but I, I was wondering if we could just have a discussion about it and see if we could learn from staff whether it's advisable or not. So that's why I asked, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Hummel?
Just, Ms. Cook, to clarify, when you are referencing signing bonuses, are you really talking about retention bonuses and signing bonuses? Right, so signing bonuses and retention bonuses?
Well, you know, so typically the superintendent recommends and we respond, and so I don't know that I'm actually recommending, but when I say signing bonuses, I am assuming, because the teachers sign a contract every year, right? So that's what I was thinking, but, but I am trying very hard not to recommend, but rather to inquire.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Young?
I, I guess, I, I just would like clarification also, Ms. Cook, are, are you inquiring, I use the right word, right? As to teachers that sign the contract, there would, you're, you're asking if there would be a bonus, if we could provide a bonus?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity at this moment in time where people appear to be making decisions, whether or not there's an opportunity for us to incent that decision in the right way that favors us.
So is your question also applying to new people coming on board as well?
Again, I, I, I don't know.
So back to the superintendent.
Yeah, so, yeah, discussion of staff retention, I think, in response to what we heard on Friday is what I was thinking, but, but I'm, I'm curious if we can learn and, and whether it's something that the board wants to learn about and discuss and see if there's an opportunity for us to take action or not.
Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, two quick questions, how many, do we, how many have already recommitted?
Mr. Baker, do you have those numbers with you, because I didn't bring them with me this evening? I do have them in an email, but to save me going back, I know we had about over three hundred who had not recommitted for a certain, but if you could break that down for us?
Yes, ma'am, the, no one's signed a, a contract yet for, our, our current staff for next year, but we have intent letters for some of the new hires for next year. But as Dr. Herron was mentioning, for our current staff, as we put out the intent for folks that were undecided or transferring or resigning or retiring, Dr. Herron said we had three hundred and thirty-five staff tell us that they were either gonna resign, retire, or undecided, or wanted to transfer, and two hundred and nine of those were actual teachers. So we set that out a few weeks ago.
So that's three hundred and some out of, is that out of the eighteen, an eighteen-hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
Number?
Yes, ma'am.
And there currently zero have, have said, yes, I'm definitely coming back?
I'm sorry?
No one has, has signed any intent to return?
We haven't, we give out contracts and after the budget's approved in May, we'll, we'll give out the, the current staff's contracts then.
So the intent, the only response to, to what you've?
Everybody else said they intend to return, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So people have responded in the positive that they intend to return, they just haven't signed it yet?
Correct, we, we have.
Around fifteen hundred?
Yes, ma'am, but we had, yes.
Yeah, I think the, the two hundred and nine teachers, for example, who are undecided, we, we had a, a column that also asks about the reasoning behind that, and so salary and other things came up in part of that rationale. I think what was different this year is, is that we rarely have so many undecided, and from speaking to teachers from, from various corners, part of that is, is looking across our area and wanting to know what other people are likely to be offering. So I do think we're in a very unusual position this year that it, it may be appropriate for the board to, to consider some kind of a bonus to retain teachers and staff, all staff.
Dr. Beers and Ms. Hummel?
I, I guess, I, I think, I'm thinking operationally.
We can't hear you, sir.
I'm thinking that, the, the challenge here is, everybody gets a bonus or nobody gets a bonus, and, and if we have seventeen hundred, fourteen hundred, I, I've lost track how many employees we have.
With about nineteen hundred?
Yeah, nineteen hundred, you, you, just, if you have a group that's already signed a contract, you can't say, well, you don't get the bonus because you already signed it, but we really need to get these other teachers.
But they're not, they haven't signed yet.
Yeah, at this point.
No, I know, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is, if you're gonna have a bonus, it, it has to be across the board, it can't be, so whatever it is, just throw it out, say it's five hundred dollars, every teacher that comes back or is hired gets that bonus, even the brand-new teachers. I don't see how you can hire the brand-new teacher and when other teachers who may have been there a year or two get a five hundred, I just, I, I'm, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the whole, more, I, okay, philosophically, I agree with this, I, I, I'm just thinking how it actually could be done, and all I can really think of is, and, and actually it's based on a comment that one of the members of the Board of Supervisors made Friday, was, or the question he asked was, are you expecting to have a surplus at the end of the, the end of the year, is it gonna be a large surplus? And, I mean, he started, you know, talking about, well, that, you know, maybe that could be used to reduce the cost of health insurance to teachers. But my thinking is, well, I, I suppose that's where, if you're looking at nineteen hundred employees, you need, you need a chunk of, you need a chunk of change, and I think, but maybe that's the question to ask the superintendent, where, where, where are you thinking, where would that money come from in order to do that?
I believe we would need to wait until the next meeting to have more information about our current budget and know more closely where we are, because there's a lot of unknown things right now. Ms. Ewen, if you wouldn't mind just mentioning a few of the things that are kind of surrounding us right now that we don't know, and so before we'd make a decision like this, we'd want to certainly know, but I think the, the intent would not be, would be to give it to every current employee. Dr. Beers, it wouldn't be to isolate every current employee who signs on for next year.
So, yes, as Dr. Herron mentioned, there's some unknown variables at this point for us to be able to give you an estimate of what our year-end surplus might look like. Our state revenue is based on our March ADM, which will be finalized in the next month or so, but in addition to the House and Senate versions of the budget for next year, they also had proposed amendments for the current year, just as the governor put out information in December as well for the current year. So the state budget information isn't finalized still for this year. We would hope to have that information in time for, you know, an April board meeting. In addition, you know, as you mentioned, we do have a significant amount of vacancies, and we do anticipate some expenditure savings, but as has been mentioned about gas prices going up, and, you know, we think that maybe next month we'll be on a better position to estimate how that's gonna impact other areas of our expenditure budget.
So it could be recognition for the work that's been done this year, as well as signing on the dotted line for, for next year. Two other divisions I was starting to inquire today of the region and beyond, and I know of only two so far who've, who've given a bonus, and it's, it was two thousand for full-time and one thousand for part-time employees. That's just two different divisions have done that during this school year. I don't know if that's funds in the operating budget, or I don't know if it's grant funds. So we're trying to get a sense of where other people are right now, because we really want to, to value our employees as much as other people do. If we were to give you some figures, if I don't let Ms. Ewen do that, give us some sense if we were to consider bonuses, and this would be not taken into part-time and full-time and things, I'd have to give you some big-picture numbers just to be thinking about, if we were to give a bonus of five hundred, and maybe take us through a few figures, Ms. Ewen, I know you've got those ready.
Based on the current staff on payroll as of yesterday, and again, it's not differentiated between part-time and full-time, the approximate cost of a five-hundred-dollar bonus would just be over, just a little over one million dollars. The cost of a thousand-dollar bonus would be just about two million, sixty-one thousand as a couple of examples.
Ms. Hummel, and then Ms. Cook and Ms. Ordigo.
So last year, just as an example, we, our end-of-year spending, like, we had over almost eight million dollars that we had to give back to the localities. So am I understanding that we're looking at assessing our end-of-year spending, and if we have, you know, that it might take two million dollars, but let's say we have a overage of, let's even cut it in half, like, five million dollars to give back to the localities, I'm just throwing out numbers, that's where that money's gonna come from, right? That's where you're going to give us your opinion about where's the best bang for our buck for rewarding the teachers that are staying, incenting the teachers to come here, rewarding the people who stayed out of that chunk of money, is that correct?
That is correct, and we, we also do want to consider if it's called a retention as well as appreciation-type bonus, do we split whatever we would be prepared to give and pay some of it out of that and some of it out of grant funds, if there is grant funds available, which we will know, so we'd pay some this year and then some when people actually physically return. So, so there's, there's different ways to look at it, and we'd like to see where the money is, and if you think it's appropriate, we'd like to bring some information about that to you in April.
I really think it's appropriate, and I would love to see us do something like that.
Ms. Cook, and then Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I, I would like to learn more, I'd like to hear your recommendation, Dr. Herron. I am, I'm also curious about this idea of amending the fiscal year twenty-two budget with a, a one-point-nine percent bonus, because a percent is a different animal than a, a just a straight-up cash, you know, thousand-dollar, five-hundred-dollar bonus, because that dis, it, it, it helps people disproportionately based on the amount of their salary, right? And so I, that I'm also curious on your opinion about.
Yes, that, Ms. Cook, we won't have any control over if it, if it's actually part of the Senate version, and, and maybe, Ms. Ewen, you could speak to that, or the, the caboose bill, as it's called?
Sure, yes, the caboose bill for the Senate, it did include a one-time bonus payment Sure, yes. The caboose bill for the Senate, it did include a one-time bonus payment, um, that would be paid out in June. And the funding, you know, would come partially from the state and then we'd have to make up the remainder. But that's what that is. The Senate version includes a one-time, one point nine percent bonus payment.
So I was, so in my mind, I would think that we, that would not take the place of what we're talking about. And so I just wanted to bring that up as well. So I, I would just, again, you recommend we respond, but I did wanna have this discussion in light of what you revealed at the joint meeting on Friday, uh, and the confluence of maybe having a little extra play in the budget as a result of unfilled positions. And then also sort of for the first time, because two hundred and nine teachers undecided, that's nearly, nearly twenty-five percent of our teacher workforce, right? And that's unprecedented, yes?
That's correct.
So that, that's, you know, that's eyebrow-raising to me and very concerning. And I think, um, justifies swift and decisive action, in my view. So, anyway, so thank you.
Ms. Ordigo and then Ms. Hunley.
Yeah, I just was wanting to get a, I, I take everyone's word for it, that the two hundred and nine undecided is unprecedented. What is typical at this time? And, and of whatever the typical number is, how many of those do actually return?
I would have to pass to Mr. Baker for that.
Yeah, I think anecdotally, it's more like fifty every year. It's, it's a very small number.
That are undecided?
Yes, ma'am.
And then how many of those do actually decide to come back?
Um, I'll have to pull that information, but I think it's, it's, uh, even less than that. I mean, would, would not return.
Sure. But like significantly less? I mean, is it, you know where I'm getting at?
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yes, significantly less, I would, yeah.
The most do come back, even if they're undecided at this point?
Yes, ma'am. In past years, and it, but it's a significantly smaller number. It's more like, the, the numbers we've gotten in the past is like fifty.
And do, do we, do we know what the cost is, is an average cost for new teacher acquisition? Like, what does it cost on average to acquire a new teacher, recruiting? You know, is, is there a cost associated with that that you have in business sometimes?
You mean for hiring a new teacher? Yeah, we could certainly provide that to you. I don't have it in front of me this evening, but we can certainly look at the cost for bringing on board and training a, a new teacher. And then when you lose a teacher, then any staff member to bring on board, again, there's a process that we can put a figure to for you.
That would be helpful, too, I think, to compare what the cost of brand-new acquisition versus retention would be.
And I think the biggest piece in that, Ms. Ordigo, is, is the, the teacher experience. Um, so once you, if you keep hiring brand-new teachers into a school system, the students are not getting taught by experienced teachers that we highly value. So that turnover affects the experience in the classroom as well.
Absolutely. And I'm not, I'm not precluding which one is more cost-effective. I really don't know. I'd be curious to know. Um, and my last comment is, you, you've mentioned grant funds a few times. I, I would, I would think that, um, we might really wanna look at grant funds, especially if we're talking about rewarding teachers that have gone through COVID for two years and all the extraordinary, um, amazing work that they've done, uh, above and beyond on so many levels. Um, I think that would be an excellent use of, of government COVID money. Um, so I would like to heavily look at that.
We'll certainly look at that as well. As you recall, last week, last board meeting, we presented the, what we plan to use that money for in the next couple of years. But we're certainly looking at, at all of that to see if there would be an opportunity even to, to partially pay with, pay with grant funds.
I would think if the situation is as, as dire and as immediate as, as we're all acknowledging that it is, that that might be priority number one.
Absolutely.
Ms. Hunley?
Yes, I just, um, we definitely need to explore bonuses and retention monies, because the other school divisions are doing that. And I know we've heard of two, but I know of more. And they're using this as a, as a recruiting tool. And I just feel like if we wanna compete, we have to get in the game. And so I'd like to explore it as well.
I think just to kind of round out this part of our meeting, this conversation, I, I appreciate you, Ms. Cook, suggesting that we have this conversation and the information, Dr. Heron, that you'll bring to us in light of all these questions. I think there is, uh, a broad interest in doing what we can to remain, um, not only relevant, but, uh, but competitive in, uh, in recruiting and retaining, uh, very highly skilled teachers. So I, I think that I share, uh, the interest amongst our board members in what you would bring back to us, some opportunities to do that. Um, some questions that I also have, uh, absolutely, you, you took one of my questions, Ms. Ordigo, on the grant funding, if there's an opportunity there. And, uh, I'm curious, as we're doing our research around this, um, and looking at, um, the, the, I don't wanna say, well, let me just put it this way. Can we drill down and explore, um, the grade levels that perhaps might be particularly hindered or, yeah, hindered by, um, uh, teachers that are choosing not to sign an, an intent at this point? Is it grade level specific? Is it school specific? That might, that might help me kind of understand the, the issue, not necessarily for this year, but how we can, um, get ahead of this next year. Uh, yeah, Ms., Ms. Cook was, was right that the one point nine percent bonus that, um, may be coming from the proposed Senate amendment, that doesn't really affect the, the retention bonus discussion that we're having tonight. That bonus, that touches all divisions, right? And it's not only retention, it's, it's every single employee, new employees alike. And so it's, it doesn't really make us competitive. So I think that, uh, it really is appropriate that we be having this conversation and get a, get a sense of what we can do, um, before too long. So thank you for looking into that.
Yep.
Ms., Dr. Heron.
And thank you very much, uh, board members and Mr. Chair and board members for having this discussion tonight, because, um, we can do a lot by valuing and having this conversation and knowing that our staff, that, that, them knowing that we want to consider this is very, very important at this moment in time. So thank you, because we have an excellent staff.
All right. Let's move on to board member comments. We're gonna start with Ms. Young, if we may.
First of all, I just wanna congratulate our, uh, our field hockey team, our girls' field hockey team that was here tonight. That was, it's always fun to see our students here. We haven't seen a lot of them lately, so it's fun to have them coming back. And, um, so I'm, uh, wanna congratulate them. I, I think in the near future, I'm, one of the things I think that's going to come to the forefront of our school, not only this school division but others, is how do we compensate teachers, you know, real fashion that actually, I mean, they always talk about giving people a, a living wage. I don't know that a new teacher getting forty-five to fifty thousand dollars can even be considered a living wage in this day and age. And, um, so I would really, really like the, our, uh, Virginia Legislature to really start having not just a discussion about bonuses and how to fund schools, but how do we actually make teaching a, a profession that people actually wanna come into? Because a, a beginning accountant gets a lot more than that. A beginning, a, a junior partner, or not even a partner, but just an associate in a law firm, goes in sometimes with two or three hundred thousand dollars. And, um, if I were a teacher, and one of the things I've seen over the years is, within the first five years of teaching, you lose a large number of young teachers, because they figure it out. Especially if you have math or science background. They get picked up by other, other, uh, companies, uh, groups, pharmaceutical, uh, groups that are much more interested. I have a sister-in-law that was in education. I don't think she was there a year before she started working for a pharmaceutical group for almost five times the salary. So it's very hard for school divisions to compete with fifty thousand dollars with a new person, because if you've got a chemistry background is getting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean. And that same person would have been invaluable in the classroom. So I think that has to be a much broader discussion than this school board. And it needs to be maybe a discussion for the entities that are involved. And I think that would be a valuable discussion, because our teachers deserve to be, be paid for and compensated, not only for their school day time, but for the time, especially if you're in high school, for, uh, participating in sports, coaching, um, grading papers, uh, and the out-of-school planning time, uh, that teachers spend. So that's the, all the comments I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hummel?
I'm just gonna say, to think locally, uh, I just would, would, um, want us to do whatever we can to support our teachers with whatever creative means we can, whether it be from the COVID funds, uh, the grants, or the end-of-the-year excess. Put that money in our teachers' pockets. That's all. Thank you.
Hunley?
Yes, um, I just wanted to say that I had a unique opportunity to go to William &amp; Mary, um, the Sattler Hall, to watch the War Hill, um, choir sing with William &amp; Mary students. And it was just fabulous. Um, the William &amp; Mary choir sung first three songs, and then our students came up and had their turn. And then they sung together, and it was just beautiful. And also I wanted to mention, um, I'm not sure if everyone knows, that War Hill does have a Teach for Tomorrow program. It's actually three courses. One's an introduction course, and then there's a course one and a two, where we're trying to have students come that may be interested in teaching and just kind of give them a feel for what teachers do. And so, um, they invited me today, um, because they needed to teach a five-minute lesson. They could teach on anything they wanted. And, um, so I learned a new dance. I learned American Sign Language. I learned, um, how to record Pokemon scores. But one student, um, brought in these eggs, and she talked to us about teamwork. And I just wanted to say how proud I am to be part of this school board team. And that's what it's gonna take for all of us, is teamwork. But after she explained all the, um, different, um, ways to be a good team player, her exit ticket for each student was an egg. And inside the egg, there was a candy. And each person had to tell her what they learned about teamwork. And so there were actually six left, so I'm gonna give them to my board members. And each of them has a little message in there, but that's what it's gonna take, creative teamwork and just working together. But our kids are doing amazing things. Just to, to be taught by a ninth grader, a tenth grader, an eleventh grader, it was just, brought me so much joy to know that our kids are, are learning and are engaged, for the most part. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, you know, I wanted to, about my comments with regard to the budget, I, I just provided those for context. I, um, sincerely wish that our community would value our school division and our employees, and, and all local government employees, for that matter. Uh, and, and, and be willing to raise revenue to compensate them in a way that makes this the best community to, you know, to live in and to work in and to play in, for that matter. Um, but I, so I don't, um, offer that as an excuse, if you will, but just context and an explanation. Anyway, so, uh, I, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for offering a transmittal letter, uh, uh, for the budget that we just, budget request that we just adopted, that explains kind of our, the potential three hundred some-odd-dollar shortfall that may be coming our way. And, um, and I hope that we're all, after adopting that, uh, budget request today, willing and able to advocate for it. Um, so the, the job actually starts now, um, to make sure that our community is willing to support, um, public education. Um, I also, uh, wanted to, you know, thank everybody here and our, uh, local partners for the joint meeting. I thought it was really productive and very helpful and, um, learned a lot that informed tonight's discussion. Um, and like, uh, like Ms. Hunley, I attended an event recently. I got to see, um, Schoolhouse Rock Live Junior at, uh, James Blair. I think several of us had a chance to see that, and it was delightful to see the kids on stage again. And, um, I can't wait to see more spring musicals. I, I think I'm going to three or four others, so I'm really excited about that. And then, um, just two more things on a more serious note. I just wanna, um, say that, uh, I, I, we take safety in schools incredibly seriously. It's part of our strategic plan, and it's something we endeavor, uh, to achieve every day and think about always. And so I just wanted to say that. And the other thing that I wanted to say is, um, you know, Ms. Hunley referenced the colleagues up here. And I just wanna say emphatically that every single person on this dais is honest, ethical, and professional. And, um, I'm lucky, I feel lucky to work with every single person here. And, um, it's an incredible leadership team, and this community, um, should be proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Ordigo?
Yes, I'll try to be brief, 'cause I have a couple of different things. First of all, I just wanna add to my things, things that my colleagues have said, and I know that everyone feels. And that is to commend the teachers and staff for the extraordinary work that they do day in and day out, most especially over the course of the last two years. We are nearing the two-year anniversary. Oh, no, we're on it. This is it, right? This was the thirteenth. Yeah, this is the two-year mark. And so it's been an extraordinary two years for everyone, in every profession, in every walk of life, um, of course. But, um, since we are representing school division, uh, just wanna acknowledge the amazing work that our teachers, staff, administrators, um, have done, and under very difficult circumstances. And, and the hard work that our kids have done. It was not easy to be a, a student in, you know, in any of these times. So just acknowledge that, um, it's been really hard, but we made it through and we'll continue to make it through. And I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to, um, continue being the excellent school district that, that we are. I wanted to mention, uh, the orchestra assessment that occurred on March fourth. I had mentioned it last time that it was coming up. And, um, it occurred on March fourth at War Hill High School. It was a student holiday, so the school was, um, empty of most students. But there were about two hundred orchestra students from across our division that participated in that. Um, three VSO musicians came to not only assess, but also give feedback and critique, and, um, ended up being sort of a mini masterclass with, with some pretty incredible musicians. So I wanna thank the Virginia, um, Symphony Orchestra and the Virginia Symphony Society for making that happen. And some of our amazing orchestra teachers, um, for being creative and, and pulling that together. I worked with, um, Elizabeth Kane and Mary Dart, but I think there were others involved, so, uh, they all did a wonderful job. And, um, I think the students really benefited from it, so that was exciting. I'm looking forward to seeing Frozen at Berkeley Middle School this weekend. So if anyone hasn't seen that yet, or ever seen, seen a show yet, that would be a fun one to come out to. And last but not least, I want to wish a very happy birthday to my colleague, Kim Hunley, who is sitting here on her birthday right now. So since she's doing that, I felt like that was worth acknowledging. So, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Dr. Bears?
I've just, uh, just a few things to say. First of all, I, I very much want to congratulate those, uh, young women who were here, um, representing, uh, field hockey teams. And to really realize that, uh, they are, they are really, uh, truly examples of what a student athlete really is. To maintain that kind of an academic average and to be as competitive as they are as athletes is, uh, is quite a feat. I also echo, I also echo that, uh, that sentiment that, um, we are really at a, we're at a critical period right now, um, when it comes to, uh, um, retaining our, our, our teachers, hiring our teachers. And, um, and it is true that we really, uh, more so than ever, we really have to, we, we have to compete now, uh, with, with, uh, a lot more school systems than, uh, than we used to. And, uh, and comparisons are gonna be made, um, by, um, um, teachers. We've been fortunate that so many of them have stayed with us for so many years. But if you look at labor statistics and most other lines of work, people, uh, um, do not stay in the same place for a, a very long period of time. They may end up, um, and be in five or six, uh, six or, six or seven different, uh, different kinds of jobs over the year, uh, over their years. I do support the bonus idea. I do also say, I, I think also, looking at the numbers with our mid-level, um, faculty, our, our mid-level teachers, that, uh, uh, compression is an ongoing, um, uh, challenge for us when we- when we compare the salaries of, uh, those middle, mid-level teachers with, um, the teachers in other school divisions. So we really have to address that. And, uh, comments that were made, uh, today, but one of our speakers really, I think, echoes that. And it's, um, and it is really important. And we may have to, uh, and I know we do that, but I, I, I know we do that on a regular basis. And, and that is to, uh, uh, try to amend that. But it's, uh, it's, it's, it will continue to be a, um, uh, you know, a serious challenge for us. And, um, as Mrs. Cook, um, uh, said, uh, I really hope, um, and I believe that, um, our community, uh, really does want to have the very best school systems, system that we, that we can have here and are willing to, uh, provide the resources for that. They've done it in the past. I know there are a lot of other challenges as well right now. But, um, um, I'm sort of an optimist here and I, I just think that, uh, it's too important and there are too many people out there that realize that it is important, uh, and we have to support. We have to support our school systems.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Thank you to those of you that stuck with us tonight. That's, uh, we don't often see so many filled seats towards the end of our meeting, so it's really nice that you did stay with us. Uh, a few comments from me. I think I want to start with safety. Um, when, when I came on, uh, a little more than two years ago, that was really prominent on, on my mind. Um, uh, the, the biggest issue of concern that I had. And not that there was anything that I could point to that was happening in our division that signaled to me that we were an unsafe school division. It was far from that. It was just what we were seeing in our, in our culture across, um, uh, across the country uh, at that time in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. We're leaning out of pandemic mode in our schools and we're seeing, um, some discipline issues, um, behavioral issues, some issues of respect in the classrooms and the ability for teachers to really be able to, uh, do what they're really talented in doing and that's educating the next generation. Yeah, I, I want to say every single board member up here cares about the safety of our, of our students, of our faculty and staff, of our administrators, of the public, uh, as we meet in these venues, uh, in, in this way. So I want to say yes, we agree. We've seen some things and, uh, not pleased with them. But on a lighter note, I'm pleased that we have approved a budget tonight. And I want to thank Ms. Ewing and, uh, Dr. Heron and everybody in between uh, that have really worked steadfastly in, in that process over the last several months. I don't know when you guys began, certainly long before January, when we first entered, entered the conversation. But thank you for, uh, being able to answer so many questions and being able to pivot in certain ways. And, um, you were really wonderful at, uh, Ms. Ewing at Friday's joint meeting. And like I mentioned to you then, it wasn't your first rodeo, obviously. And, uh, you're just a stellar professional. So I thank you for all of your work. We had a, a speaker question the, um, the abilities of our superintendent and that struck me painfully. And I want to say that, um, I have the utmost faith and confidence in our superintendent. There are a lot of assumptions around that I heard from speakers, uh, a while ago. There were a lot of assumptions around that letter drafted by a leader of superintendents for our state. The assumptions were that every superintendent of the, of each county in our state, uh, ascribed to those same views or if they did, that they approved of that letter. And those are, those are assumptions and honestly, to call for, uh, what was called for is just irresponsible based on assumptions. I do have, um, the Honorable Amy Gutierrez, I butchered that, I'm sure, her letter to the governor, if you'll permit me. It's the interim thirty-day report on inherently divisive concepts. And if you read every page and you go down to the very bottom, page nineteen, where it says, excuse me, it says, "This memo was issued, uh, as a compendium of resources and different perspectives for school division leaders." It does speak to critical race theory and, um, and, um, readings associated with criti- critical race theory. But it says, "Division leaders who are navigating community conversations related to race." And this is important. If we read this in its entirety, it is not a resource or directive for classroom teachers, nor does it reflect recommended or required student reading. Further, it says, "Finally, because the department has received many related inquiries, CRT is not included in the Virginia Standards of Learning, which comprise the content in each subject area that the Commonwealth school divisions are required to cover in their local curriculum." I think that's important to state because there, there are assumptions that, um, I, I think that the public isn't heard, that, uh, that as the public brings the issue of critical race theory to the school board meetings, uh, to the board members as we hear this, as, uh, senior leadership hear these conversations, that it hits a brick wall and we don't hear it. And that's just not true. I sat here, uh, as, uh, last year, uh, a member of the community, brought to our attention a certain book, I don't recall what it was, that, that was being disseminated amongst, um, teachers for, uh, professional development. And Dr. Heron, in front of everyone, said that that book had been pulled from professional development. So, uh, she hears these things. She recognizes, uh, on, uh, from her own view. If I may speak for her, I apologize, but if I may speak from what I've seen, um, what those things that appear to be divisive content appear to be. So, uh, I, I, I find it very, um, irresponsible to call for, uh, what was called for earlier today, uh, when we have such a stellar professional leading our school division, uh, through a pandemic, no less. Uh, I, I can't think of a very few professionals that would be able to do it, uh, with, with the grace that our superintendent has. With that, I want to move on to item ten point one, upcoming events. You have a policy committee meeting, meeting virtually on March seventeenth at eight-thirty AM. School liaison committee meeting on March twenty-third at eight AM at the REC Center. Student advisory committee on the twenty-third of March at three PM at War Hill High School Media Center. School board retreat on the twenty-fourth of March in Charlottesville. And a National School Board Association conference on April second through the fourth in San Diego. Upcoming meetings. Reflecting, uh, current change in time that we approved tonight. Closed session on April twelfth at four PM at the Annex, followed by the work session and action items on the twelfth of April at four thirty. Closed session on April nineteenth in the Annex. And then regular meeting back here in the gymnasium at James Blair, April nineteenth. With that.
What time are those meetings for the regular?
Six and six-thirty. Sorry if I didn't read that. Six and six-thirty for the closed session, regular meeting on April nineteenth. With that, this meeting is adjourned.